Good morning. Good morning, everyone, and welcome here today to the Jackson County Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, November 7th of 2023. Today I have Don Frank, Lynn Flago, myself, Mike Simon, your county supervisors. Lisa Wood is very busy today.
Good morning.
Parker, Luann is our executive assistant back here. And Mary is here from the media. First on our agenda today is Maggie Tavon, our Director of Human Resources. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm like, what? What happened? Okay, this morning, so we recently advertised for the Facility Maintenance Manager position that will be vacated by the retiree after the first of the year. Interviews have been conducted and a conditional offer has been made and accepted. Seventy-one point one of the Code of Iowa specifically states in part that it shall be unlawful to appoint any person related by consignority or affinity within the third degree to the person's making said appointment unless such appointment shall first be approved by the board. As this appointment does create that employment relationship, this appointment specifically needs to be subject to board approval. I will be here today with any other hiring practice to ask for a motion to approve the hiring of Jeffrey Hilbert as the Facility Maintenance Manager at a starting salary of sixty-five thousand dollars and including benefits as negotiated effective November 30th, 2023, including authorizing the county auditor to issue five weekly prechecks for the same. For law.
I have a motion and second to approve the hiring as presented for a Facility Maintenance Manager. All those in favor say aye. And I will. And those same time? I want to go into that formal.
Same way better. And then just another quick update, we've been tossing around the blind replacement of the courthouse, I did reach out for three bids. I received one back, I'm still waiting for a local bid, and then I did reach out to another company, I've acquired City, I'm still waiting for that bid as well. So hopefully within the next week, I'll have the other two and we can make a decision if we want or not to. I want to address that, so. I'll let you listen to that, please.
Okay. All right. So, we are. Luann, do you know Brianna was gonna join us during this section or not?
I told her she could.
Well, we said nine fifteen, so I didn't know if we wanted to jump past that and move on and.
I don't know what she's saying.
Okay, so are there any other visitors or citizens that are online today, seeing none, that would like to approach the board? I'm sorry? Brianna, you want to first? I'm lucky I know Brianna. All right. So, um.
So this morning, I need a motion to approve the minutes of the October 31st, 2023 board proceedings as written by Auditor Smith and authorize publication in the official newspapers.
Motion and second to approve the minutes of the October 31st board proceedings as presented, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, same sign, motion carried.
Motion needed to approve and authorize the auditor's office to issue warrants in the publication of the claims listing in the amount of four hundred and twenty-five thousand, nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars and ninety-six cents.
I have a motion and second to approve the claims as presented, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, motion carried.
Motion needed to accept, place on file and authorize the chair signature and the county recorder's report of fees collected for the month of October, 2023 in the amount of forty-six thousand, four hundred and fourteen dollars and eighty-nine cents.
Second. Second to approve the chair signature and authorize chair signature and place on file for the recorder's fees collected for the month of October, 2023, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, motion carried.
Motion needed to approve a special Class C retail native wine license with living quarters and outdoor service to Iowa Grapevine's Winery LLC at eighteen-three forty-five Fifty-Fifth Street, Macocana, effective November fifteenth, 2023 through November fourteenth, 2024.
Motion and second to approve a retail native wine license with living quarters and outdoor service to Iowa Grapevine's Winery LLC, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, same sign, motion carried.
Motion needed to approve a Class C retail alcohol license to Alfred's Bar and Grill at Leisure Lake LLC at twenty-one seven oh one Hill Drive, Bernard, effective November first, 2023 through October thirty-first, 2024.
I have a motion and second to approve retail alcohol license to Alfred's Bar and Grill at Leisure Lake as presented, as starting effective November first. Nice to hear that the business is going.
Yeah, that is, that's good news. Yep.
I'm sitting there and it says title, so, yeah, stick it up. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, motion carried.
Motion needed to approve and authorize the publication of the fiscal year 2023 Jackson County Annual Financial Report in the county's three official newspapers.
Motion and second to approve and authorize the publication of the fiscal year report to the three county official newspapers, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, motion carried.
Motion needed to approve setting a public hearing date for a fiscal year budget amendment on November twenty-eighth, 2023 at ten a.m.
I have a motion and second to approve the setting of public hearing date for the fiscal year budget amendment on November twenty-eighth at ten a.m., all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, same time, motion carried.
Motion needed to approve invoices for seventeen thousand, sixty-three dollars and fifty-seven cents to Midwest Construction Consultants, four hundred dollars to Chosen Valley Testing, one hundred and seventy-two thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars and forty-five cents to Bill Bruce Builders, thirty thousand, four hundred and sixty-six dollars and fifty cents to Kraus Plumbing and Heating, fifteen thousand, two hundred and twenty-one dollars and eighty-five cents to Geisler Brothers, thirty-eight thousand to Rock River Electric, Inc., a hundred and twenty dollars to Tri-State Porta Potty, Inc., and three hundred and three dollars and fifty-four cents to Republic Services, for a total of two hundred and seventy-four thousand, four hundred and eighty-five dollars and ninety-one cents, of which sixty-two thousand, eight hundred dollars was paid from the American Rescue Funds and authorized the chair signature on the project cost recap for the Law Enforcement Center for the month ending October thirty-first, 2023.
I have a motion and second to approve the invoices as presented and authorize the chair signature on project cap for recap. And so noted that that two thousand four for the project is part of our original plan, correct?
Yes. Um.
You have discrepancy?
Yeah, I do. I believe that. The two. Okay, so Law Enforcement Center. Just wanna make sure, I wanna. For some reason, my figures aren't right on this sheet. Because the total cost is two hundred and sixty-three, so let's, we can, I can go back and we can change this real quick, like, but the total is extra, actually, two hundred and sixty-three thousand, eight hundred and thirty-four dollars and forty-nine cents, of which a hundred and twenty-five thousand, eight hundred and ninety-one dollars was paid from ARPA funds. I, you know, I did this late last night, I wonder if I is. So, I mean, so the total, so the total amount for the Law Enforcement Center that we are paying on this claim is two hundred and sixty-three thousand, eight hundred and thirty-four dollars and forty-nine cents, of which a hundred and twenty-five thousand, eight hundred and ninety-one dollars is through ARPA.
Okay, so then our motion.
I, I will have the correct figures in the minutes to show those changes. I'm not sure what happened. Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Motion and second to approve the total amended, all those in favor say aye. Three wicks on the candle?
You know, I mean, I really, I, I looked at this, this was late, I, I'm not really sure, I, cuz I even added it on my calculator, so I, I will approve amended. And done, you did make the motion, and then second, okay. Yeah.
Aye opposed, motion carried.
And just as a side note, that's pretty well gonna take care of ARPA funds for the jail. There's very little left. So.
Questions.
Right.
With the improvement of the public story, where will we have financial, do we have to start trying to figure out where we're gonna pick some of those? Few places where we're going to use some, utilize some of the funds, when do we get to the point where we need to start figuring this?
So it's just been a little busy, got a few things going on. You know, I did start to look at that last week, and I was, you know, I've kinda got some thoughts in my head, I have a few, I have a few spreadsheets I'm working on. I potentially barring no phone calls yet today, if we're still good. Okay. Since John is coming, I hope to sit down and talk to John about a few things. But we did go from the one point six million of ARPA funds to the two million, and we're, we're there, so.
Your mark, if you will, that is already done, maybe do.
Yeah. So you, on this November first ARPA fund, John has one point eight million in ARPA funds, and I know that that was a question between him and Shelley, there's a, I saw some emails back and forth, but. So I'm working on that, I'm trying to make sure that we have everything that we said we were going to do, we've still got allocated, we still have money for the digitizing of the records, we still have some money left for the Harbor Wall in Bellevue. So we've got, yes, that's still sitting there, we haven't used that, I mean, there's, there's different places, so.
We need to start kinda figuring out.
We're there, that's, we're there, yeah. That just, you know, one project after another kinda piled on top of me last week, and so it's sitting on my desk, it's a project that needs to be done. Won't be done this week. Uh, the earliest I could probably get to it would be Wednesday of next week, so.
I didn't know.
Um, we certainly can. Yeah, I mean, we certainly can, if you, to sit down and talk about stuff, so. I do have one more thing, I do need a motion this morning to approve invoices for four thousand dollars to SA Architects for, that was four thousand dollars to SA Architects, eight thousand, five hundred and thirty-three dollars and forty-eight cents to Midwest Construction Consultants, Inc., twenty dollars and thirty-three cents to Chemrite Laboratories, Inc., hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred and ninety-eight dollars to Peak Construction, thirteen thousand, two hundred and five dollars to Hometown Plumbing and Heating. To Hometown Pub, to Peak. Peak Construction is a hundred and fifty-six thousand, three hundred and ninety-eight dollars. Thirteen thousand, two hundred and five to Hometown Plumbing and Heating, fifty-two thousand, eight hundred and fifty-five dollars and fifteen cents to Crawford Company, twelve thousand and thirty-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents to Stickley Electric, twelve thousand, eight hundred and fifty-three dollars and fifty cents to Midwest Auto Fire Sprinkler, a hundred and twenty dollars to Tri-State Porta Potty, eight thousand and sixteen dollars to KE Flatwork, Inc., sixteen thousand, seven hundred and thirty-three dollars and fifty-three cents to Schneider Flooring, three hundred and seventy-five dollars to AT Disposal, for a total cost of two hundred and eighty-five thousand, one hundred and forty-nine dollars and ninety-eight cents, and authorized the chair signature on the project cost recap for the Jackson County Fair and ISU Extension, the Four-H Outreach Center for the month ending October thirty-first, 2023.
I have a motion and a second to approve the invoices as presented for the Four-H Outreach Center and authorized chair signature, all those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, motion carried.
Okay, that makes sense. That's baptism by fire. Morning, John. Um, my only question this morning, John, is that on the art funds, ARPA funds, your project costs show one point eight four nine? Is this a good number?
Yep, that's all yet left.
Yeah, okay, yeah, twenty-nine thousand, okay, yep. So yes, I knew we were getting, getting down there, so we do have, so of the two million that we've allocated, we have twenty-nine thousand. You'll see that on line three. Row, row three, I guess, column three.
Okay, so.
And that's all that I have for the board today.
Thank you.
Yes. Yes, actually, I'll.
Yeah.
So at this time, Luann, would you yield?
Yes.
So we're joined by Mr. John Hanson, Jr.
Yep.
I don't know if I ever read that part before.
Yes, sir.
Jeremy's not gonna make any changes?
No, I got him working.
From Midwest Construction Consultants, I did go by this morning, I seen Baki has the dirt moved and they're leveling her out, looks good and.
Yeah, we're gonna see if we can get a check and wind her yet, you know, to finish up some of that landscaping, they're gonna. We're not gonna, the masons are coming back, so we won't be doing the part around the transformer yet. It'll just get screwed up. They're finishing the gas mains, they're supposed to start setting up units today, but they they don't have the crane here, and so we're trying to find out what's going on there, we gotta get a little bit of heat in the building. Even as you're there, working on some of that exterior painting and stuff, doors, they hung a bunch of the doors and stuff, so everything's coming along pretty good.
Well, I talked to Paul a little bit down there, he's been there. He's a little bit early this fall.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, the reason, but, but in the building. You know, I'm out in the chat, yeah. We're still testing the heat supply, I think it's next week.
Is that the generator for the north side of the building now, the?
Yep. Yep.
Man, I, I don't even know if there's an EPA or estimated arrival of the trains?
They were supposed to be set up today, so we're trying to chase them down and find it out, can't play hard and jazz, I think there's somewhere. Yeah. Um, but the plumbing is coming along good too, the masons did a great job out there, getting everything tested and so they just got a lot of work to do to catch up, but.
So, I guess, yeah. We got an email, and I think we got that, we got that email from the tow company, that maybe they're thinking about starting the thirteen?
I didn't.
Coming this morning, I think, early.
I hadn't seen.
Yeah, I will do that, I can do it right now.
Uh, you know, that's fine, and the BLB or whatever, they, they set their box the other day and handed to that with fiber. So, that's set to go, and it'll be good, cuz I believe they're born over to the transformer. So, that way they won't disturb that over there, really, but they'll probably have a whole dugout on other shots.
What if you go in and you gotta come out?
Yeah, I just meant.
Does that go underneath where then, they'd be born under parking lot mostly, or where?
Parking lot, I think they have good transformer. Uh, that's where the connection is forward. Yeah.
Yeah, well, they were talking about that, it was gonna be a straight show.
Yep. So they're gonna start thirteen then?
Yeah, but you sent that email out, I believe this morning.
Okay. He's up.
He's at one I got. I don't think he said it, Bob.
Yeah. Mine didn't go off. No, I think it's coming along pretty good out there. If you're trying to get the masons back, get them finished up up there, cuz it makes such a dang mess. But we get the masonry up, stop, and they're bitching and drywall and stuff up there. And I checked on the locks, they're due to come in beginning of January, but I want those guys fixing the child every quarter. I mean, there's no reason they shouldn't be able to finish up by December or something, just be waiting on locks. And that way we'll get the punch list, all walk through, get punch list done, and close the two and all of the drills. Any other questions?
Can we switch over to the, the, the?
Yeah.
So I think there's the parking lot, but that one's right.
That's all that's in the project right now.
Okay.
We're down to, uh, look, hey, but we started over budget, we're down to fourteen thousand, which I believe to be under because we're not gonna do the extent of the earth for shit that's showing there, showing up. So, we could do the west side for the parking, but that'll be ground, it's being donated by. So they're donating, so that would be rock out there until we get enough funds that they can pay for this. They, you know, the building, building just stretch their, I mean, it's a pretty good fee. We got cabinets, we gotta get, you know, they're trying to get bought out. Kitchen equipment.
Okay, any other questions for John?
You'd sign that yellow one, and then you can sign Lisa's, I think, back to confuse. I don't need these extra.
Well, I mean, I, I deliver them to. I deliver them. See, I deliver them to McCook to State Bank, so which ones did you just? Oh, that's jail, okay, so which one is?
Yeah. And each got next.
Okay, so, wait a minute, how many extension you have to do that? Maybe do break. I have one, do you want the extension one? Cuz we'll keep one, I deliver one. I wonder.
Is this just one second for on the yellow copy here, John? No, there were more, not worth it. This one is the. I will do it after this, we need to be.
I'll go open. Is that true, Jackson, it's real water, you don't want it?
You have a lot.
I have a lot.
You have a question?
No, no.
Oh, I thought you said I have a lot of questions.
I'm sent me there. Yeah, nobody's.
It's just the day.
I wanna keep everything hidden every day.
You're welcome.
All right, well, thank John, and hopefully it wasn't staying nice enough for everybody, we can get things moving along.
Yeah. Yeah, maybe next month we had a good block to, yeah, in schedule, you know, you had a lot to do today, but.
Sounds great.
All right. Okay. Luann, are you available?
Yeah.
Good morning, Luann.
Good morning.
And our executive assistant.
All right, calendar. There's not much fun today's calendar, because we have things to do. Tomorrow morning, Wednesday, November eighth, at nine a.m. Nins, it's her turn, I'm in a huge just talk. At one P.M. tomorrow, the zero to five meeting, sixty minutes, I Zoom also bring in. And at four P.M. is the Veterans Affairs Commission Meeting downstairs in the conference room, three minutes, one to ten thousand. Thursday, November ninth, at eleven a.m., is the Mississippi Valley Workforce Business Committee meeting, uh, by Zoom for Don. At noon is a Jackson County Area Tourism Association meeting by Zoom for any of you that want to attend that. And at one P.M. is a Grantwood City Byway meeting for Nins, and that was gonna be in person, but now it's Zoom only. Friday, November tenth, courthouse will be closed in honor of Veterans Day. Monday, November thirteenth, at seven thirty a.m., I tend to, we have an early childhood IO Executive Committee meeting um, into it or by Zoom for Nins. And our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, November fourteenth, at nine a.m. That afternoon at four o'clock is a Mississippi, Macochana River Watershed Management Authority Executive Committee meeting by Zoom for Don. And from five to seven that night is the Community Foundation of Jackson County's fortieth anniversary celebration.
Did you verify with Nathan or Jeff Paul about the destination on work? He didn't want to convert all this confusion that came while I'm wanting to get to where I'm at.
I do try, he had a room reserved downstairs, but then he apparently went to Zoom only and sent out a Zoom link. So. I thought there was a meeting, yeah, but it wasn't downstairs, yes.
Was there a Zoom meeting?
There was not a meeting, cuz I called Nate, there was not a meeting.
So he's, I'm not getting very consistent information.
We just need to make sure that.
I think it was the time, right, yeah.
Yeah, I was thinking it was out at Hurstville.
I didn't think to ask Josh, I was talking to Nathan, so.
All right.
Okay. Um. In terms of business this morning, we were going to talk about the involving one fund agreement for together, we build, I understand that's going to be tabled.
Yeah.
Yes, at this point. So the other bit of business was to talk about December fifth, we, our December fifth meeting, and whether or not we wanted to reschedule that, because you have a DCA, um, tag meeting, or a, or a meeting. Tagged on top of an eleven o'clock in the morning interview. So did we wanna move the December fifth meeting, do we have a different date, do you wanna start early, so you'd be out of here by nine thirty? What, never mind. Claims we.
I was like, let's.
Fifty December, you had the twenty first, yeah, that would be clear.
Right, so we need to do something.
Eight thirty here.
Yeah, it doesn't matter for me, we don't have to be out of here till ten, I can, we can, whoever's going can easily be there in an hour.
Well, we got an RPA meeting.
It's an RPA demand, like a, an annual one, it's a bind. Um, Stu Anderson, who the state's gonna be there at eleven o'clock.
Eleven o'clock.
I don't even know if it's available by Zoom, I haven't.
So, I mean, if we start at nine, as long as we're out here like this, or like that.
Well, I wish you started eight thirty, sure.
I'm gonna, I won't schedule any budget sessions for that day, we'll just. We'll have a full day on the seventh of budget sessions. That works.
Yeah, you have people to, uh, find out.
Do you need a motion for that?
I, I would, I would make a mo, yes, I believe.
I'll second that.
Motion and second, change the meeting start date on December fifth to eight thirty a.m. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed, motion carried. All right. Well, we can sit and talk about things, we'll hold these up for a little longer, and then we.
Yeah, I, you know, I'm surprised we don't have coffee here today, I, I've got time.
No, I, I, uh, I don't really have a lot to report. Done, and then both hundred and nine one made, one one meeting for me. And, uh, further. So, um, I, did I hear right, they are moving forward to radios and the.
Radios for the main. Basically, one main unit for each fire.
And rescue.
Just, yeah, and then, um.
The single, the single frequency. The single, the single frequency.
Um, I thought I read that minutes, they said they're discussing, they changed them to the eight hundred.
For both. So they're gonna do uh. They're gonna keep the VHF radios in the marines and just do a single band.
Okay.
Is what they're looking at. So there'll be like two radios with a repeater.
Do is that with Motorola?
I believe so because they came in the installation chief.
Do you know if we have a contract?
That I don't know. Well, that would be a probably a Mr. Meaninger question. Probably a Mr. Meaninger question.
Well, I I, okay.
I my guess is we're gonna have to ask them because if it was just approved last week, we could go ahead.
Oh, so there wasn't a like one before when we.
They did with the.
This is another one.
This is a whole separate, kind of a separate for fire and EMS.
Each department has one unit that responds to all the calls, so that's their main unit that's spot. So they will have communication with. Now, having that.
Way to communicate with PD.
State auditors are asking. And we were like. We weren't involved in it, so.
I think we had one with the PD one.
I'll.
But.
So do you think it's between nine one one, nine one one sa- sign the contract with Motorola? Or do you think the city or?
Say at some point they're signed.
Okay, I'll reach out to land, see what I can get. Okay. I'll do it.
Um, any other reports from any of them?
No, I did enjoy the uh. Look at Green Island, see the breach of their properties they have in the water.
So we did have a chance to visit the the dike and the breach in the dike and uh, it was pretty amazing. I don't know that I would have stood there and took a video when that when that breach took place.
Yeah.
They walked a little distance and uh. It's uh, it's actually amazing the money that they have obtained and getting to redo these projects and.
A lot of grants.
Water projects and stuff down there. They're really working at it and uh. Like uh, Chris said, a state on the pipeline that's going to go somewhere else. They're getting some real funding down there to do some major. And he said they have people. Basically, worldwide come around down there to go fish and then do other things on.
They said they see more out of state and out of county vehicles almost than local.
And sometimes it's as many as a hundred vehicles in the parking lot down there with boats and.
And bird watchers and.
Yeah, they said they get tons of bird.
Supposedly, I forget what they said it was, but there's a rare.
Yeah, there's some, they had people from like. They get through the rocket at Nebraska. They get from over there. Look at this bird.
So the only other. Spot or place like this that offers that at northern Minnesota or something, maybe somewhere he said, but. Quite a while. Should get him have actually have Chris from him. They're trying to do some things with the with the levees or local levees, you know, the upper lower district and the middle area, so. It'll be interesting. Well, it was it was a good tour. It really was. They were able to obtain even some more land next to the highway fifty two down.
Yeah.
Wet land and. Oh, yeah, it was it was very.
Projects in mind moving forward, so.
Otherwise, I have nothing else either.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Motion carry, moving adjourned.